Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Urbana City Council Committee, the Committee of the Whole, meeting for March 9th, 2009. And could the clerk please call the row? Could the clerk please call the row?
Ms. Barnes, Mr. Bowersoff.
Here.
Mr. Garrick.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Smythe.
Here.
Ms. Stevenson.
Present.
Mayor Pressing.
Here.
Okay. Are there any additions to the agenda? Additions or alterations? We have then a staff report from Tom.
I'm not called down.
We're hearing you. Can you hear me?
Can we turn up the volume a little bit?
Okay. Okay. This will be Tom from Economic Development.
Good evening. Everyone should have received an electronic version of this month's Economic Development Report. Just to highlight some items in this month's report, a lot of activity, new businesses opening. Lincoln Square Village, The Great Impasta is now open, opened approximately February 12th, and the owner says that he's received a very warm welcome from the community and he's very pleased with business to this point. So, great indications that they are doing well. Dina's Hallmark in Lincoln Square, we did, the city staff and Lincoln Square management did meet with the owners of Dina's Hallmark and they are indeed staying at Lincoln Square Village, so that's great news. Flourish Flower Shop now open at 110 South Ray Street. Madeline's Gallery, another business opening, that's above Mirabelle Bakery at 122A West Main Street. We had a ribbon cutting this month for Sin-Sin Cafe at 114 North Vine, that's in the Schnucks Shopping Center. Black Dog Tavern at 201 North Broadway, again, new business, just opened, and I think I'm allowed to say that I had lunch there today and it was spectacular. So, great new business downtown. Some construction on North Lincoln, 84-room comfort suites under construction, not quite open yet. Sandell's Flatbread has scheduled a ribbon cutting for this month, great new business at Gregory Place. Construction continues on Burger King along Philo Road, and Heartland Bank is also under construction, right next door on Philo Road. And the commercial shopping center developed by Chris Creek at The Point is nearing completion and they are working aggressively with tenants and say they should have some announcements coming up very soon. So, great news for that. Ryan Bro and I went up to Chicago for the International Council of Shopping Centers Midwest Alliance Show. We exhibited, we had development opportunities at the city booth. The economy has slowed, but we're finding that Illinois is faring a little better than nationally, and this market in particular, Urbana and Champaign, is faring particularly well because of our stable employers. So, that's great news. Again, things have slowed, no one's completely isolated from the economy as a whole, but we are doing very well comparatively. So, great news there. As far as upcoming events, I have a couple of announcements. On March 19th, the Realtors' Open House, that's an event being organized by the Urbana Business Association in conjunction with the various taxing agencies in the city of Urbana, the school district, the park district, the city of Urbana. Again, the Realtors' Open House, that's going to be at Urbana High School on March 19th from 5:30 to 7:00. And that's an opportunity to hear about some of the new and exciting things happening at the various agencies throughout the city, really designed to help Realtors market sites within Urbana. So, that's a great event. And then, we have Community Walk for Mental Health called Walk for the Health of It. That's Saturday, April 18th, at Stone Creek Golf Course, and I have some information here if anyone is interested. Again, Saturday, April 18th at 9:00 AM, and you can call Stone Creek if you need additional information about that event. That's all I have. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Yeah, thank you for all the good news, Tom. I did have one question, which is that I often hear, yeah, excuse the losing my voice, but I often hear questions about the progress on the ITA property, and I know the city's worked hard to talk to the owners and continue to keep them thinking about what's coming next there. Do you have any updates, or can you at least put it on your list to kind of keep touching base?
We actually did contact the owner of that shopping center. It's a real estate firm named EB L&amp;S out of Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. We contacted them, they are aggressively marketing the site. They do have, they have pretty good tendency on the smaller spaces, the large space is vacant, and so it appears the shopping center is vacant. Again, they're aggressively marketing it. They had one prospect and were unable to get a contract with that user, but they are working on it, and they are very interested in filling that space. I think the distance is a challenge, although they do have local real estate representatives. So, it's on our radar, it's on their radar, and I think the space was not filled previously because there was a leaseholder that was preventing it from being filled. That expired about a year ago, and the economy now, I think, is slowing it up a bit. But we're, it's high on everyone's radar, and we're really working hard to try to get that space filled.
Dennis?
Yeah, I hadn't, I hadn't really planned to do any kind of formal presentation, but I just wanted everybody to know that, that recently, this last week, I went up to the National Main Street Conference in Chicago, and I thought I'd just mention a few things. It was a 40 conference, such an excellent conference, it was so thoroughly useful to thinking about the downtown development that we have, that we're interested in having down here. And they had excellent programs on design, downtown design, and preservation, and economic growth. They had very strong presentations on new interactive electronic promotion of city spaces and city businesses, very cutting-edge discussions about these kinds of electronic ways of engaging the public. And I went to one conference session that had to do with, it was called the Interactive Downtown, that I'd really like to talk about sometime more in depth, but they listed about 14 different ways of engaging younger people in the downtown area through electronic means, interactive electronic features, games, displays, art. And it just seemed so interesting and vital, and I thought, all these things would so suit our community, so I'm going to hope to have a presentation and pass out some information specifically about that at our next meeting.
I just wanted to mention that, in case you saw the letter in Sunday's News Gazette, it was a letter recognizing, it was nice to see recognizing the successes of the economic development, but it was also particularly nice to see that recognizing our staff's part in that economic development, and I second that. Thanks for your wonderful work with this. Okay. Anything else? All right. With that, now we're to the approval of the minutes of previous meeting, February 23rd, 2009. So, I have a motion. A motion by Heather, second from Robert. By voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Okay. Next up, we are in public input. We have three people who would like to speak, all of them addressing Resolution 2009-03-010R. I'd like to begin with Wayne Johnson. If you could give your name, address, and keep it to five minutes, please.
Thank you very much. My name is Wayne Johnson. I live at 1810 South Vine Street in Urbana. Some 400 years ago, Mr. John Locke penned a classic treatise on government, and the authority of his words echoes across the ages. Mr. Locke addressed certain natural rights, certain natural laws, that, that, he didn't invent these things, but he recognized them, and the truth of them was incorporated into our Declaration of Independence and all our government hangs upon these natural principles that Locke enumerated. The purpose of government is to secure the blessings of liberty to the citizens and to protect our rights to life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness, which Locke spoke of as being property. It was later, is what pursuit of happiness, the way that Locke defined property is perhaps just as well defined as the pursuit of happiness. But I'm quite concerned by a editorial, actually a letter to the editor, that talks about the unchecked use of power by the, by the city, that says something that should frighten every one of us. And indeed, I'm constantly concerned about the, about the power and the authority that the city seems to exert at times, and indeed, the constructors of the Declaration of Independence, and Mr. Locke himself was quite concerned about matters of power and authority. But in the, in the paper, in the information that I received in regard to this zoning concern, it says that additionally, the city is supporting legislation proposed by State Representative Naomi Jacobson, which would amend the Illinois Municipal Code to include Champaign County in the list of counties exempt from the effect of the Chatham decision, which is a decision of the Supreme Court, outside the extraterritorial jurisdiction. One of the main reasons the city supports this legislation is to prevent property owners negotiating with municipalities across the state for the most beneficial zoning designation, regardless of whether annexation would ever be able to occur as a practical matter. Now, wanting to prevent property owners from most beneficial situations, it seems that this is depriving people of actual good. Perhaps this is poorly worded here, the way that it's written, but it's hard for me to grasp here how this is in the mission statement of securing the benefits of liberty to the, to the people. So, I'm really, I'd like to have an answer to why the, why the city is wanting to pursue this. And then, another question I have is what part of the city code empowers the city to participate in this sort of effort? I also noticed recently that the city is participating in a, in a series of lawsuits, or actually judicial actions, trying to bend some judicial action which they felt was negative to the, to the historic property program. And again, where is this in the, is this in the mission statement of the city, and what part of the city code gives the city the authority to participate in these activities?
Mayor?
If you're questioning why we could be a friend of the court in the Chicago case...
Indeed, I suppose that you have the right to be amicus curi, the friend of the court, but it seems that the motivation is more than just simply that of trying to provide informa, that of trying to provide information. Actually, there is a political action involved here, and it seems that there's a political action involved in supporting this legislation. Is this really the, in the mission of a city? And what part of the, what part of the city code gives the city the authority to do this? And which branch of the, of the city, is this, was there a resolution approved by this council that, to do this, or?
Yes. There was a resolution approved to be a friend of the court.
Okay.
It was last week, I believe.
Okay, and also there was a...
And it was to defend our ordinance, because the two ordinances are very similar, so that's why we joined in as a friend of the court. And I believe that we have a right to pass that ordinance, and we have a right to defend it in a court, and that's what we're doing. And this is a home rule unit of government, and I don't think we have to have a specific ordinance that says we have a right to intervene in a court case.
Okay, okay, so that is, that is one question, but then the, the other, in regard to this legislation, is this based on an ordinance, a resolution also?
Well, we have zoning, and we have had the right to have a say in the extraterritorial jurisdiction around the city that's in the county jurisdiction. And people are concerned about the Chatham decision, because theoretically, that would allow someone to get a zoning from somewhere else in the state, like from the Rockford area, to zone something that's eventually going to be annexed to Urbana. So, that's what the concern is.
Okay, all right. That would, if indeed it was happened to be in regard to that, I suppose that, that answers my question. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Jean Thompson, speaking about the Casey's General Store.
That's what I mean. Good evening. I just want to thank the council and the planning department for registering my concerns and those of my neighbors, and for your willingness to consider this lower zoning designation, which I believe will result in a better process. The step-by-step aspect of this process, as it moves between the city and the county, can be difficult to understand, for me at least. I won't take up your time asking you to educate me, but perhaps you could refer me to someone I might contact later with such questions. I do believe I understand your protest, no protest option. When Casey submits a revised screening plan, would it be appropriate for my neighbors and I to address you at that later time? I hope, thank you. I don't know if Casey's will be submitting some sort of landscaping plan. They don't seem to offer much landscaping within their sites. Perhaps I was not to provide lurking areas. Briefly, I want to emphasize the current site plan's extreme proximity to my living quarters and to another permanent structure, a deck which extends about 10 feet from the back of the house. I have a photograph and a colorized site plan for you, which helps illustrate this. I'm not sure how close to alcohol sales I should be expected to sleep. Also, my lot lines are extremely eccentric, and along the south edge of the house is only three feet from the property line itself. This has never been a problem before. No one has coveted the full extent of any adjacent property. Casey's current site plan shows the making use of parcel right up to this three-foot line, so that any operations would be taking place three feet from my bathroom window. Welcome to my world, all of it. And if this area is fenced at a three-foot line, it would have the effect of making it impossible for me to walk from my side door to my backyard, due to the placement of an air conditioning unit. So, last, although these may not be analogous situations, given the interface of city and county governments on this parcel, I note that in 2004, when the city of Urbana granted Aldi Foods about a mile east of me on Route 150, a special use permit, among the requirements was a six-foot solid wall around the operation, landscaping outside of that wall, restrictions on hours of operation and deliveries, and a distance of 150 feet from the nearest residential structure. So, thank you, that's all I have. These items, all of them. Is there someone I could contact with questions about just procedure and process?
Mayor?
Well, I think the Community Development Department can help you through the process.
Yes, Ms. Bird. Okay, okay, thank you. That's all I have, if you have questions for me.
Any questions?
Thank you.
And finally, we have Dennis Moore of 2210 East University, speaking about the Casey's store.
Good evening. My name is Dennis Moore. My wife and I own the property directly to the west of the, the site where Casey's are planning on building. We, just a little background, we, we bought the property, it's been just about three years ago, and it is rental property. And I noticed in your, in the papers I read, it's listed as motel, but it is rental property. And we just had some concerns with the, with the original site plan that Casey's showed us through the county zoning. The, there was no type of fencing or anything along the west side, which I understand now they, they are talking about a wooden fence or something like that. We would really like to have a, a solid fence of some type, low maintenance, a wall or just a white plastic fencing, some type of solid fencing there to keep lights from, automobile lights from shining onto our, our property in the evenings, and pedestrian traffic, too. It's a big concern of ours, because of the, the mobile home park is directly behind us. And so, I just want to let you know about that. And the setbacks that they have is very, it's very close, I think it was eight foot away from the property line, and they were talking about either moving it over to the 10-foot required, or, and that's still, we have a duplex that is right there on that corner that they're talking about, with their bedroom window right there, and that would really be close for them. They, it looks like on their site plan, they have the dumpster there, and then they also have their fueling, refueling tanks and everything right there happening. And so, that would be a lot of noise for our tenants. And that, too, we would like to see some type of evergreen tree or something growing there to deaden the sound. They have nothing on their plan, that I saw, for any kind of vegetation or anything there to do sound deadening. And that's, we would really like to see something like that. And it sounds like, just talking with Jean, I missed your last meeting, that you were concerned about maybe changing the zoning to a B2, or I think it is, which is what our property is, so you could have a little more control over that. And that's what we would really like to see, and just so that we have, so we can, you know, ask for some of that kind of thing, for, for protection of our people in our duplex right there. We also have another building that's fairly close to that line, that would be affected by the headlights and sound and everything from the, that side of the building. And I guess that's really what I would like to say about it.
Do you have any questions? Dennis?
Dennis, do you live at the site?
No. No, I don't. It's rental property. We have, there's several units there, several different buildings and several units.
Well, it's always good to be concerned by your tenants.
Yeah, we're...
That's the men's board, and it's good to come forward and talk about your insurance for future listeners.
Yeah, that's it. We are very concerned with our present tenants there, and then anybody that may, you know, move in in the future, because there will be a lot of noise from that gas station, you know, till, what, 11 o'clock at night? I think they usually stay open or something, so it's a big concern for us, because we, you know, like to, it's a quiet area right now, and would really like to see it to stay that way, or, and so would our tenants, so.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dennis.
And I guess I, too, would like to go talk with somebody and, you know, kind of be informed with the process and everything.
I think that, again, would be Rebecca Bird, in this case?
Okay.
Who's actually going to be speaking about this very shortly.
Okay.
Mayor?
Did you talk to the county board yet?
Yes.
And did you raise the noise issue?
Yes.
And what kind of a response did you get?
They really didn't say too much.
Yeah.
They were concerned about it. They did agree that there would be some noise problem and lighting problem.
Do they have any ordinance, or are they worried about the, exceeding the state levels?
I don't have the specifics with me, but there was some kind of sound level and lighting levels that they were supposed to meet. We, I don't, like, I don't have those specifics with me, but...
Did they think that you would have to have a wall in between to meet the standards?
They did agree that there should be some type of structure there to prevent headlights and that type of thing showing on our property.
But about noise, did they talk about a structure built for muffling the noise? Well, I mean, we can, we can deal with that, but...
I can't really say for sure.
That is kind of a big issue, I think, that we're trying to deal with right now.
Yeah, that, that side of the building, with the dumpster being there, there's, you know, the garbage trucks come in, you know, all hours of the day or night, whichever, you know, whenever they have time. And, you know, so there's definitely a noise problem there. And then, at the present Casey's stores, I, I've, you know, just driving by there, I've noticed the employees go out there and have a smoke, or, you know, there's always a gathering of people there, too, so I'm sure this one would be the same way, that they would go out there and take their breaks or whatever they do.
We'll take your concerns very seriously.
I have a question that I could ask you.
Go ahead, Charlie.
I suppose if you can, if Dennis would be said, I'm personally too, since that's what your property is, could you just ask that at all?
Yes, please.
He's asking about whether it should be B2 instead of B4. I think they're requesting B4. Is that correct?
Yes, I think so.
And you're, you're saying that yours is...
Ours, from what I understand, is B2.
Okay, Rebecca should probably talk on this. I think it's going to be on me. Okay. Rebecca should answer Charlie's question. It's about the proper zoning.
Okay.
All right. Would you like to start with the question, or...
As you like. I could do the presentation and then take questions, or answer that question. The property to the west, the property that this gentleman's speaking about, is zoned B2 in the county.
Okay. Thank you, Dennis.
You're welcome. Thanks very much.
Next on the agenda is the same thing, Resolution Number 2009-03-010R, a resolution of protest against a proposed map amendment to the Champaign County zoning map, a 1.4-acre tract of land known as 2218 East University Avenue slash Casey's Retail Company. And we have Rebecca Bird speaking to it.
Tom here is actually going to be handing out a larger site plan for you, so you can take a look at that. This case started just over a year ago, when the petitioner, Casey's, approached the city with interest in annexing the subject lot and redeveloping it as a convenience store and gas station, a Casey's General Store. The property is not contiguous to the city limits at this time, and so annexation isn't possible. So, the city advised that they would need to rezone in the county, but for this project, they would need a sanitary sewer permit from the Urbana-Champaign Sewage District, which would require, under an intergovernmental agreement, an annexation agreement with the city. In that annexation agreement, the city can stipulate the zoning designation for the property once it becomes annexed into the city, and can also include other conditions such as additional screening requirements, operational hour limits, that type of thing. The subject property is on a federal highway, it's just over an acre, and it's currently zoned in the county R5. The R5 zoning designation in the county is for a manufactured home park, and if you look at, if you have your packet from last week, Exhibit A, the location and existing land use map, so on that, it looks like this, in the packet from last week, not from tonight's, the packet that was for tonight, you can see the subject... was for tonight, you can see the subject parcel is in orange, and to the right of it, so to the east, is a fire station. North of it is a single-family house, and to the northwest is the manufactured home park, which takes up several parcels there, you can see. And then to the west is, according to the assessor's office, it's transient lodgings, which is a motel, but it's actually being used as an apartment. It's zoned B2 currently. If you turn to Exhibit B in that same packet, you'll see that's the existing zoning in the county, which is often hard to read, unfortunately. The, according to the county, the property to the north, directly north, is a single-family house. The west side of that property is actually zoned R5, manufactured home park, and the part on the east side is zoned single-family. And then Exhibit C, you can see the future land use map from the Urbana Comprehensive Plan for that area. And on the future land use map, that parcel is designated as multifamily. Multifamily, the description of that does allow for supporting business services in that, in that, in that description. So Casey's has requested a rezoning from R5, the manufactured home park, to B4 in the county. I spoke with a representative from Casey's. They were unable to be here this evening, but they would like to come and address you at your next committee of the whole meeting on March 23rd. And they are amenable to a lower zoning designation. They, they asked the county for the B4 because they thought that was most appropriate, but they're certainly willing to look at a lower designation. And I explained what we were looking at, the B2 or the B1 in the city, and they were amenable to that. So your packet that you received for tonight's meeting has some analysis of, of the city's B2 and B1 zoning designations. As, although the lot is, it's a small lot, one acre, for a manufactured home park, so it's not really realistic to have a manufactured home park on it. And it is on a federal highway. It does have, it does have a fire station adjacent to it, and so perhaps a single-family house is also not realistic. But we looked at the B2, city's B2 and B3 zoning districts as more appropriate for it, as it is adjacent to R1. The city B1 zoning designation, zoning district, I'm sorry, would require a special use permit for the proposed use. The city's B2 zoning district would not. So the recommendation this evening is to postpone making a decision on this until Casey's has come and presented to you. They are looking at the screening and looking at setbacks, and would like to come and make a presentation to you in two weeks. The, I think part of the reason that there's been a bit of confusion, the, the site plan that they submitted to the, to the county and that you now have, is, I don't think it's actually their, their final site plan. So this is, they were petitioning to have a rezoning, not to get approval of this specific site plan. So it may well be, this is their general plan that they, how they develop Casey's, and they just kind of put it onto this lot without fully evaluating this site and what the adjacent, adjacent uses were. So I don't, I don't, as I understand it, and from speaking to the Casey's representative, this isn't, they're not set on what's on here. So I would be happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Brandon?
Yeah, does, if we end up at B2 instead of B1, does the conditional use process still allow the same controls over noise and screening and lighting as the special use process under B1?
I think under B2, it's, the city's B2, it's permitted by right, but for any of these, the Casey's is going to require an annexation agreement to the city. And in that annexation agreement, we can stipulate the screening and operational limits and so on. That can all be part of the annexation agreement, which they would need because they'll need a new sewer hookup.
Okay, thank you. Dennis?
I'm trying to, trying to jog my memory, but maybe you can help. On the Exhibit A, which is the location of existing land use, and it's an aerial view from our packet from last time, a couple, the third property to the west is, is commercial. And is that not also a convenience store?
That is a Casey's. They're planning to relocate. They want to expand that. There are, I think, two pumps on that site, and, but there's no canopy, and now most gas stations to, to really be effective do have a canopy to screen from the weather. And so they're, they're wanting to redevelop and have a slightly larger convenience store and a few more gas pumps with a canopy, which is why they need a larger site. So they would no longer be, there wouldn't be a Casey's located at that current location.
And is there any indication, you know, how they're going to just use or disperse that piece of property? I mean, that's, I suppose not part of this discussion, but-
Perhaps the Casey's representative could answer that next, at the next meeting.
They're not going to be maintaining two different units?
I would, no, no. They're planning to relocate.
I have a question, though, to add to that. Do you find that you're familiar with the, the, the time I, I check them in? Can you hear that?
We, we can hear you more or less okay. Many of your vowels are nice. Some of those consonants are coming through okay. You have, go ahead, Charlie.
The, the current Casey's, no, it isn't. It's in the county as well.
Okay. So, so that's, but everyone can reference when you're checking, the power of B2 requires a report plan and, and, and what it could be swept over, that correct?
That B2 does require a site plan?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yes, so, so regardless of our association, there's an attitude to, which, which, which just, and then with that, and that's the master area, that's the part of the standard law. And, and so, on my office, I'm, I'm, to, 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 to,
I'm sorry, I don't understand that.
He's talking on his cell phone, I think, and that's the problem. We can't hear him.
I, I think that we got that last one garbled. Is there a chance you could take another whack at it?
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll tell you. Um, we, we're trying to, 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 to,
What can we do to influence the county?
Uh, we can, yes, we can, the council can pass a no protest conditional on a lower zoning district. So conditional on the county's zoning it to the, the county B2, or to another county zoning designation, as you see fit.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
Okay. Heather? Did you have a question?
No, I didn't have a question, but my, I was going to say that it's, that, that prop, the current Casey's isn't in the city, but Charlie already asked a question.
Okay.
I was a step ahead of him.
Okay. Do we have any other questions?
I, I just wanted to give a little summary. We've done some more investigations since the last council meeting. The city does have more of a say in this case than some of these rezoning reviews. It would be good to work with Casey's and the neighbors and the county to avoid a protest because we have more say. We have more say because they need an annexation agreement to get their sewer hookup. In order to get the annexation agreement, the city needs to agree on the proper zone, and the city also can impose conditions, whether it's B1 or B2. And that conditional use permit, or special use permit, is folded into the annexation agreement. So we have a lot more control, if you will, here. And I think this is something that we, just came to us as a county case, but it really is a city case as well, even though it's not going to be immediately annexed. So we have more work to do, and I think that's why we'll be asking for the continuation.
Mayor?
We have the power to set some conditions. Do we have the power under our current ordinances to set the conditions relative to noise?
Noise is often covered under these conditional use and special use permits. So yes, you can do that through the annexation agreement.
Robert?
When, when we deal with the issue of noise, do we have to stay within the context of state requirements, or can we deal with it from our requirements as we set them?
I think you can deal with it from a zoning perspective, how it relates to the nearby uses, so it's not a nuisance to those nearby uses. So it should be specific to that particular layout and that particular use. And it's the types of, we have dealt with this before in conditional uses and special uses, and I think the Aldis was a very good example with the hours of operation, and then they had some screening that was required and some setbacks and that kind of thing. And all of those will help with the noise.
Okay, I got one.
Dennis?
This is, again, a useful discussion, or the start of a discussion. I think it would behoove the city to kind of review and perhaps build consistent or stronger industrial noise ordinance. There's different community sections within Urbana who have had residents come forward questioning what the noise level, appropriate noise level is for industrial or delivery concerns in next to residential areas. We've had this come up about four times in the last year and a half, and I think the mayor's been interested in this, and so I would hope that we might actually, during this coming year, look, look for a more of a consistent standard for noise levels in our community.
Okay, if I could jump in, too?
Go ahead, Charlie.
Okay, um, Libby, if you, if you would, uh, if somebody would take back to Casey's, it strikes me that this is a perfect application for LED lighting and, 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 and that's why I'm playing Claire's gender, so, and everybody's laughing, but, but gas stations are, especially the canopy and, and the directional lighting that LED can provide would really protect the neighbors.
And Mayor?
To answer your question, Dennis, we were talking with the sound expert this afternoon, actually.
Cool.
So we're, we're moving forward.
I like that.
Are there any further questions, or do we have a motion to postpone to the 23rd?
I'll make a motion to postpone this, this case to the 25th, I believe it is?
Twenty-third.
Is it 23rd?
Yeah, 23rd is the west.
Okay. Let's make it the right day, the 23rd.
Okay. And Charles, we have a motion from Robert and a second from Charles. And all in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
And the last item on our agenda is Ordinance Number 2009-03-017, an ordinance amending Chapter 14 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Urbana, Illinois, regarding the schedule of fees, adding design review board application fee, adding fireworks permit fee, and revising food handler license fees. Go ahead.
Briefly, as Delora had included in her memorandum, the, there's three actions in this ordinance. The first two are kind of house clean, housekeeping items, establishment of a two-permit fees that have already been approved by the city council but have never been in our code of, of fees before. And that's the fireworks permit, and then the design review board permit. And then the third action is under the, the four different types of food handler licenses, is really to increase those by a cost of living adjustment. The last time those were increased was three years ago. And these smaller licenses, what we do is, once every three years, we will then adjust those. This represents about a 10% increase, given a dollar rounding up, one way up or down for these. And so that, that's a little less than three and a half percent each year for those three years. The reason we have to do the food handlers separate from all the rest of the ones, which will be coming before you in about a month, is that food handlers are combined, Champaign, Urbana, and the Health District do the all together at one time. And that's, that's much better for the, the people buying those permits. They're inspected one time. They only have one process to deal with. And they do that effective April 1st, so they cannot wait until, you know, July 1, when our fiscal year starts. So that's the reason why these are separate.
Are there any questions? Dennis?
I think these are, you know, probably fine. I did want to ask, and maybe it's just because I haven't been here completely this last week, about the fee for the design review board. Can, can I get a little bit of information about that? What, who's going to pay the fee and what, what are the requirements? And I'll repeat that. Libby, can, can you brief me a little bit about the fee that's associated with the design review process? How does that initiate, and who pays for it? And, you know, and a little bit about the background about why we're doing that?
It's analogous to our other site plan review fees, like we have in the mixed office residential, or for a zoning map amendment, or a planned unit development. It's the same amount, $150. And that's, helps to offset just a small part of the costs that we have for holding those public hearings and putting out the public notice, and then reviewing, technically reviewing the site plan. So the petitioners are responsible for that. They fill out an application and bring that in. We have lots of zoning fees in the schedule of fees, so that fits right into that schedule. About the only zoning procedure that doesn't have a, a fee associated with it is the historic preservation activities. And that's because we're trying to promote those. So we haven't attached fees to those, but everything else gets in the $100 to $150 range.
And so this would be something that our, the developer or the construction company or whatever would be bringing forward to you?
Exactly.
Thank you.
Any further questions? If not, do I hear a, a motion to send this to council?
I'll make that motion, that we send this, the fee adjustments that are being proposed in the ordinance 2009-03-017 to city council with a suggestion of approval.
And we have a motion from Dennis, and a second from, from two people at once. Robert, Robert wins, wins the photo finish there. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. With, with that, that concludes the agenda. I wanted to congratulate Brandon on having his voice finally changed. Gives me hope that someday it may actually happen to me. And with that, the meeting is adjourned. Hail Freedonia.